Hello. I just wanted to give you a little update. We have about 400 or so people in line to check in. And I've been advised that I should not start the meeting until everyone is checked in and ready to go. So continue to chat amongst yourselves while we get everybody checked in and in the place where they need to be. Thank you very much for your patience. That's it. So we're getting there. One final announcement, I hope. Just to remind everyone that there is no campaigning allowed in a public building. So please don't be collecting signatures on petitions and nomination papers, et cetera. If you're doing that, tuck your papers away and please stop. Thank you very much. Should I start? Okay, please come to order. The 2025 special town meeting is now in session. We're going to just do a very quick pledge of allegiance and then we're going to get going, so if you could all stand. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may go back to seated. Return of the warrant. Hereof fail not make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting an election afore said, given under our hands this 26th day of September in the year 2025, Donnie Hill Chair, Matthew G. Fee Vice Chair, Thomas M. Dixon, Malcolm W. McNabb, Brookmore Select Board of Nantucket, MA pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth and the warrant adopted September 26, 2025. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Nantucket, qualified to vote in town affairs, to appear at the time and place and for the purposes within mentioned by posting said notification on October 1, 2025, at the Stop &amp; Shop on Pleasant Street, the Town and County Building at 16 Broad Street, and upon the bulletin boards at the corner of Main and Federal Streets and Siya Scott Square, sworn to under pains and penalties of perjury, Jerry W. Adams, Constable. Okay. So I'm not going to go through a whole lot of introductory stuff. I will just tell you town clerk here to my left, right next to the piano, town council and town manager, the select board, finance committee chair and vice chair, planning board chair and vice chair. Everyone else is in the first couple of rows, just in case you wanted to know who all those people were. Hopefully you have a copy of Town Meeting Traditions and Procedures. This is the supplementary guide that Mark Arnold put together a number of years ago. We've updated it a few times along the way. It is our supplementary handbook for Nantucket's town meeting, and I'd ask for your unanimous consent, as always, to adopt that as supplementary rules of our meeting. Thank you. I want to take a moment to go over just some basic rules. It's going to be really, really important to remain civil in this meeting. This meeting is going to be successful only if you make it successful, and you're only going to be successful if you're nice to each other and civil and you follow the rules. So I'm really begging you to do that. Please identify yourself when you speak. Wait to be recognized. Address all remarks and questions to me. Don't do any sort of cross interrogation or conversation. Out of respect for the traditions of the meeting, please no clapping, cheering, or catcalling. I know it's really hard not to, but please don't. Please take any of your empty water bottles or trash with you when you leave. The janitorial staff is not really set up to deal with this mess if we leave one. Tomorrow morning, as early as possible, please remove all of the road signs that are around, particularly the yellow signs that say that town meeting is tomorrow, November 5. I'd be really bummed out if a bunch of people show up here tomorrow looking for a meeting that happened tonight, so please get those signs down as quickly as possible. Please remove your hats, particularly when speaking. If you have a question or at any point are confused about what's going on, what you do is you rise to a point of order and I'll recognize you, but please don't overuse the point of order. It really is supposed to be just for a question of order. It's not just an excuse to get up and say whatever you might want to say at the moment. Please limit your remarks to the matter under discussion. I will give a little bit of leeway because we only have two warrant articles. It's going to be hard to talk about one without talking about two and vice versa, so use your good sense on that. I do have a couple of slides that people have asked to be put up when they're speaking. If you could let me know when you want your slide projected, that would be really helpful so that I can let Jeremy White, who's the guy behind the curtain running all of this for me, know when that's going to happen. I just want to say just one quick thing about motions to move the question. First of all, I'm not going to take any motions that aren't made by someone recognized at a microphone, so if you're sitting at your seat, don't start yelling motions at me. That isn't going to work. And the motion to move the question is something that is not very popular. It's used a lot. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote, and if someone moves the question and that motion passes, we go immediately to a vote on whatever the main motion is that's then under discussion. And because it does take a two-thirds vote, it's a pretty good sign if a motion to move the question passes that people are ready to move on. So try not to be too frustrated if that happens and just remember that if you want to keep talking, you defeat the motion to move the question. It's really important that you stay and not leave. We only have two articles. It would be great if everyone would stay till the end. I can't guarantee what could happen after we deal with Article 1. There could be motions to reconsider. There are all kinds of crazy things that can happen, so I'm really suggesting that you try to stay all through the meeting. Most importantly, I think this goes without saying, please avoid personal attacks. It doesn't stand you in good stead. It doesn't further your cause, and it just makes the meeting a lot more unpleasant than it already is. So we have a bylaw, bylaw, Section 44, 7.2. It does require someone who's employed by another person to come to the meeting to discuss any matter, to disclose the fact of employment. So if you've been paid by someone to come to the meeting and speak, please disclose that when you're recognized. It often has been used against lawyers, and rightly so, but it isn't always lawyers that it applies to, so just remember that. Non-voters have been moved, as I think you heard, to the CPS gym. If you have a mobility issue, we're going to have four microphones. There are two here and two up in the center, but if you have a mobility issue and you can't get up and get to a microphone, please get the attention of your teller and they will bring a microphone to you. As I said earlier, we do have one representative of the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers present. That's allowed under our charter, and that is Mr. Edward Sanford. The electronic voting, we had something up on the screen while we were waiting. This is your handheld thing. Keep this with you at all times. You can leave it with the tables in the front when you go to the restroom, but otherwise, please keep it with you. Drop it in the boxes at the door when you leave. Do not give your voting device to any other person or let anyone else vote using your voting device. We're going to do a little test, just so everyone gets the hang of it, and the question that I'm going to ask that you answer is this. Last spring, maybe, at some other meeting, we tested out having pro and con microphones, and some people really liked those and some people really did not like them. So I thought I would say, if you want to have pro and con microphones, you can say yes. If you want to just have random people speak at random microphones, you can say no. If we have pro and con microphones, the microphones over here to my left, the front and back, those will be the pro microphones. These microphones here, right in front of me, will be the con microphones. The microphone in the gym will just be a free-for-all microphone. And then if you just have a question, you can go to either microphone or you can come down and use one of the microphones at one of the front tables. So the question is, yes for pro and con microphones, no for no pro and con microphones? And you press 1 for yes, 2 for no. The green light indicates that voting is open. You press either 1 or 2. 1 is yes, 2 is no. While the green light is on, you can change your vote, so you can go back, you can change to a no and then decide to go back to a yes or go to a yes, and you can go back and forth while the voting is open. The last thing that you select when voting is closed is what will be counted. And because there are so many people voting, it takes a little bit longer because it takes longer for everybody to get their act together and vote, and it takes just a little bit longer for the signals to get in to the equipment. So you're probably going to have about, oof, about 60 seconds to vote, so that gives you a lot of time to think about the question. Does anyone have any questions about the voting? If at any point you think your device isn't working or you don't understand what's happening, there's an electronic voting help desk over here in the, what do we call that room? AVR, AV? The ARR, right over here, where it says Electronic Voting Help Desk, oddly. Okay, voting is now closed. On that vote, on the pro and con microphones, yes, 5:21, no, 5:49. We will just have the free-for-all microphones. Okay, so I'm going to try to go kind of circulate amongst the microphones, and if someone is speaking from the gym, they would just go to the microphone at the gym and speak from there, and, yes. That's how many people voted. There were 26 clear.
[inaudible]
There aren't 2,000 out there either. We didn't end up with 2,000. There was some kerfuffle with the boat. No, no, I know. How many do we have signed in?
Roughly 13, 1400.
Yeah, roughly, we have 13, 1400 people signed in. Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. So we're going to go right to Article One. Article One, as you know, is printed in the warrant. It had a motion.
[inaudible]
Yes? Okay, well, we just did a vote, Mr. Sullivan, but I guess we can do another vote. What questions do you want me to ask people? Okay, here's what we're going to do. If you have a handheld device, please press, can we do, can we do like an open voting thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Please press 1 to confirm that it's working, and don't press 2, unless you're really one of those people, in which case, I get it, I'm one of those people to, go ahead, press 2, we'll count them all. But don't abstain, because that's causing people to have questions. So, voting is open.
Did Mark tell you how many people and how many are out?
Yeah, it was [inaudible]. [inaudible] So, on that little test, 1360, yes, 23, no. See, I knew, I knew that, because I'm one of those people, and clear, 1. So, there you go. And that's just about how many we have out. So I understand that the voting light isn't coming on in the gym, so when we go to vote, I will be sure to tell you when the voting is open, and I will be sure to tell you when the voting has closed. Okay, so, Article One. Because it received a motion not to take no action, the sponsor, Mr. Borgerson, is going to make a motion, and that motion is going to be, it's shown on the, it's shown on the screen, and it's essentially what was printed in the warrant with the language at the beginning changed to be a motion, move that the zoning bylaw, Chapter 139 of the Code of the Town of Nantucket, is amended for the purpose of restoring, et cetera, et cetera. And then it's as printed in the warrant. Is that your motion, Mr. Borgerson? Where are you? Okay, if you could come up to a microphone, that would be great. Is there a second? Okay, that motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Borgerson, you have the floor for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, everyone, for showing up here tonight. What an epic show of fours for the voters in Nantucket. Whether you're pro or for Article One or Article Two, this is pretty good turnout. Hello. As you know, my name is Brian Borgerson. I'm the sponsor of Article One. This is a citizens' article. This article came to fruition by getting the required number of signatures to acquire, sorry, I'm a little nervous here, to have a special town meeting so that we can discuss this very, very important issue of short-term rentals in our community. Just so you know, I don't have a political action committee behind me. I don't have a massive real estate conglomerate behind me. I have a bunch of citizens that we have worked together because we want to clear this situation up and get it over with. We want to get back to work. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and remind everybody that we are voting on two articles tonight. Do not vote on Article One and get up and leave. We are voting on two articles tonight. That is very, very, very important. I'd also like to thank all the supporters of Article One for not putting up the yard signs and uglifying our beautiful Nantucket. I called Nantucket my home for a long time, and I feel that this is super important, and I felt that this issue needed a special town meeting. I called this special town meeting for two reasons. First off, after Judge Vey's ruling, rentals of any length are not allowed in our zoning code. Our zoning is youth-only, youth-only, and there is no rentals allowed in our zoning. This is an important issue. We have to vote on it tonight. We cannot wait for spring and come back to this room and have a 15-hour town meeting as our eyes bleed as we discuss ad nauseam other articles. This is a very, very important article. If we pass Article One tonight and vote no on Article Two, we will not have to come back in May at our regular town meeting and vote on rental zoning again. You're welcome. Secondly, there is just too much economic and legal uncertainty with what's happened with the judge's ruling. I have clients calling me, looking to book charters. My sister-in-law is looking to have her wedding out here and is really worried about where people are going to stay. There is a ton of uncertainty. People believe they are not allowed to rent on Nantucket. If we don't decide tonight, an off-island judge has the ability to shut down what we do. We do not do that. We decide. Nantucketers decide. What Article One does, Article One is simple. It reinstates rentals, short and long term, into Nantucket's zoning bylaw, subject to current and future regulations. It protects your property rights and those of your children. Like I said, it's our property. We decide. Article One is subject to the existing regulations, which include a ban on corporate rentals. We did that in this room like three years ago. Investor REITs are not allowed. We have state and local registration. We have regulation, taxation. We have occupancy laws and compliance with noise, parking, and lighting. All of these things are all part of our general bylaws. There's a 24/7 hotline that people can call for short-term rental issues. There was 7,000 calls this year. No, sorry, there was five calls. There was five calls. The people who don't want STRs weren't even smart enough to stack those with fake phone calls. Article One satisfies the concerns of Judge Vey and the future judge in the appeal process, and stops the privately funded lawsuits that have divided our community. It also stops future lawsuits, so that your neighbor's not going to look in your window and see that the suitcase color has changed from people that walked down the driveway and called the police on you. Article One also provides economic stability for all of our businesses, for every single business on this island. No one here works at the sawmill. No one here works at the iron plant. We're all in tourism, whether you like it or not. What Article One does not do, Article One does not open the floodgates. It does not allow this massive investor tsunami of people coming down to buy houses to rent out. It does not do that. It allows us to continue the tradition of vacation renting on Nantucket, and it is subject to our current and future regulations. Article One also does not lock us into something that we can't have. If we vote yes on Article One, we are able to change anything in Article One through a majority vote by a general, through a general bylaw at future town meetings. If Article Two gets voted through, in order to change anything on Article Two, it is going to take a two-thirds vote, and we know how hard it is to get two-thirds for anything on this island.
Thank you.
Yep. It also does not allow off-island judges or political action committees to tell us what to do with our properties. We decide.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing to say.
You're going to wrap it up.
Okay. Nantucket has a huge tradition of our visitors staying in vacation homes. In 1995, there were 60 hotels and inns. Today, there are 33. Where are these people supposed to stay? They stay in rental homes. This is about property. This is about our rights. Let's base future regulations on factual information and some idea about how someone else wants us to live on this island. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Iverson, were you wanting to speak? I wasn't sure.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Here we are, Groundhog Day. I just wanted to take a minute just to kind of explain, and I'm speaking for myself, not as Planning Board Chair, what each of these articles does, okay? Article One represents the status quo, business as usual, okay? No further regulations are included in this, but there are ability to regulate in the future. Article Two represents durable regulations that represent, to the people watching, a step back and a deep breath. It says, maybe I'm not all right with what's going on now. I think it's important for us as a community to make a choice. We have a choice now to make. Brian stated his case very well. I don't think we should leave here without voting either 1 or Article Two in. It is our choice as a community to what the future of this island looks like, and tonight is the night to vote that in. There's a third option that Brian touched on briefly. That would cause economic destruction here. You would be allowed to rent in the ROH for one day less than you use your house. I don't think anybody in this room wants that. So it is very important tonight to decide what you think Nantucket should look like in the future, and vote that through, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Feath?
Is this on?
Yeah, it is.
Forgive me, it's my first time doing this. This special town meeting was brought forward by Mr. Borgerson and you, the voters. The Finance Committee has nothing but respect for citizens who take their civic responsibility seriously, and I want to commend Mr. Borgerson for exercising his right to do so. This will be the first citizen petition special town meeting in memory. It takes a lot of work, and it takes a lot of courage to drive forward a debate on such a sensitive topic. The Finance Committee supports this citizen warrant article brought forward by Mr. Borgerson, Article One. The Finance Committee does not support Article Two brought forward by the Planning Board. Sorry, buddy. Article One provides the clearest, most responsible path forward for Nantucket, codifying short-term rentals within zoning and bringing long overdue legal clarity and stability to homeowners, renters, and the town's finances. The town is already spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars, defending ongoing litigation, money we could be spending on our essential services, schools, infrastructure, town employee housing, and broader community engagement. Article One preserves regulatory authority in the hands of voters through the general bylaw process, ensuring that any additional regulations are guided by data, community input, and fiscal analysis. This approach builds on Nantucket's history of responsible regulation, supported by the Finance Committee and the broader community, including measures such as banning corporate ownership of STRs, requiring annual registration with the Board of Health, and addressing bad actors through a complaint hotline and annual permit renewals. In addition, the Board of Health already has the authority to propose new regulations, subject only to approval by the Select Board, without requiring further action by town meeting. You, the voters, are in control tonight. You called this special town meeting, and you can bring closure and clarity for the entire community tonight. Please, let's do just that.
Thank you. Yep, the woman up at the microphone?
My name is Maggie Stewart. I own an event planning business, and I also work with Patrick Ridge at Island Kitchen Catering. My husband is a teacher at the elementary school, and we have two small children that we're raising on island. Between Island Kitchen and Maggie Stewart Events, we employ almost 100 year-round staff members and double that number during the current extended season. I'm concerned that if Article One does not pass, we will see an immediate and precipitous drop in shoulder-season commerce. This is because the term "short-term rentals" encompasses a majority of the housing options available to people outside of the July and August months. This source of lodging makes it possible for people to travel to island for a manageable period of time, and vastly expands who is able to visit, enjoy, and spend their money It is the case that these options, if it were the case that these options were made illegal, many restaurants and local businesses would have to restrict their shoulder seasons and close early. This would obviously adversely affect island business owners, but it would also cause many local year-round residents who currently use these moonlighting opportunities to lose essential income. This time of year is not typically staffed with J-1 visas, their teachers, hospital employees, and local parents, who will be without the income from the second jobs that they rely on. I'm also concerned that failing to pass this article will only serve the ultra-wealthy retired homeowners, who are simply looking to have a quiet place to vacation, at the expense of the working-class families and year-round people that truly make this island worth visiting in the first place. Thank you for your time. I urge you to vote yes in Article One, and vote yes to support the working people on Nantucket.
Thank you. Okay, the person at this microphone?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Eric Sylton, and I live at 3-Meta View Drive. So to my fellow Nantucketers, you've read my letters in The Current and The Enquirer and Mirror, so I will not repeat their substance. I just wish to emphasize several points. First, any warrant article, in this case either Article One or Article Two, is more about behavior than it is about substance. Therefore, even though we each have our own differing opinions, I am reserving my vote for the compromise embodied in Article Two. Second, regarding my comment that, quote, "80% of STRs are owned by off-island investors," end quote, residents can find this figure cited in a study conducted by FXM Associates and its associated fact sheet, with an analysis performed by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, STR Registry, the ARI report on Nantucket, and the 2021 UMass Donahue Institute report. Third, regarding the unfairness associated with the, quote, "short-term rental tax loophole", which can be corroborated by those of you scanning perplexity, Nantucket commercial property tax rates are 1.7% higher, 1.7 times higher than residential rates, and any property that is declared, quote, "residential," end quote, but is used for commercial STR purposes is shortchanging the town's revenue, and is costing those of us that do not short-term rent a higher residential assessment. In effect, both the town and individuals that live here but do not short-term rent are subsidizing those that do short-term rent. This financial fact has been corroborated by the folks at 14 Washington Street, as well as those on Beacon Hill.
Thank you.
Finally, I would like to thank David Iverson and Tom Dixon for their hard legwork in crafting compromise Article Two. Supported by many of us, all with disparate points of view, no matter which side one is on, we appreciate the thankless task that you performed. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Peel?
Thank you. Matthew Peel. I'm just going to adjust this, get the height up here. Well, anyway, I just wanted to poke holes in a little bit of what Brian said earlier. You know, he had stated that he's not backed by a political action group, but, you know, I would, the entire time that he's been doing this, he's been, he's had Nantucket together by his side, funding him, funding the campaign, funding all this. I'd go as far as saying I would be shocked if he wrote one sentence in this article. So, I'm not trying to poke holes. I have immense respect for Brian. I like Brian very much, but let's call a spade a spade. I mean, it's, this is, this is not a citizen warrant article. So, I just want people to think about that. You know, there's been two sides here, and, you know, one side has really tried hard to move towards the center here, and the other side hasn't. It's codification, codification. I understand we have to deal with this lawsuit, and we should, and I hope that happens tonight. But I just want people to think about what they do want for the future of Nantucket. What does it look like? What was Nantucket to you back when you came here for the first time? Is that vision still the same? No. Just think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Sanford?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Edward Sanford, and for the first time in over 50 years, I stand before this assemblage as a non-voting taxpayer. I've been asked by the Advisory Committee for Non-Voting Taxpayers, our seasonal residents, to voice support for Article I. As my parents did, many seasonal residents consider Nantucket home. Often friendships are made with you, the year-round residents, and is important historical part of the island's social fabric. Over time, some visitors become seasonal homeowners and taxpayers. Some seasonal homeowners become year-round residents and are now voting at this town meeting. We need to ensure that the island is accessible to all vacationers to guarantee the future of this tradition. We can all assuredly agree that our summer vacation visitors are a vital part of the island economy, helping support many local businesses. Over 90% of vacationers rent private houses, houses, not hotel rooms, are the accommodation of choice for visitors and their families coming to Nantucket. Nantucket town finances are dependent on a healthy flow of visitors during the summer season and the surrounding shoulder season months. Short-term rental taxes have added over $50 million to town coffers since 2019. As the town is facing daunting capital expenditures over the coming decades, it needs the short-term rental tax revenue. The Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers enthusiastically supports Article I because it accomplishes several important goals. Article I restores every residential property owner, of which 80% are owned by seasonal residents. It restores every residential property owner's, excuse me, legal right to rent your property as you so choose, subject to existing and future regulations. Currently, both short-term and long-term rentals of 32 days or more are not defined in the Nantucket zoning bylaw. Therefore, rentals of any length are legally suspect. Approving Article I makes your right to rent explicit and clearly legal. Trying to do this quickly. A lawsuit filed in 2022 is currently threatening to greatly restrict your right to rent short-term. This legislative body, not an off-island judge, should determine how we rent our properties. Approving Article I ends this legal assault on all island residential property owners' rights to rent. Lastly, Article I will protect local businesses and the island economy that depends on vacationers coming to the island. We are a resort economy. It protects the town finances and its tax revenues, and it lays the foundation for future sensible, well-researched regulations to be considered at future town meetings. The Advisory Committee for Non-Voting Taxpayers, your seasonal neighbors and friends, urge you to vote yes on Article I, and we ask you to stay and defeat Article II. Thank you.
Thank you. The woman up at the back?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Jocelyn Duffy. I live on Long Pond in Matican. Article I says that unlimited unchecked STRs are good for the island. I dispute this with the following points. In fact, it invites off-island investors and speculators to stuff their pockets at the expense of local homeowners that are eager to rent. It diverts a lot of money off-island where it belongs. 83% of the income coming from STRs goes off-island. Visitors and STR renters only provide 4% of income to the local economy via FXM Associates, this research firm, whereas local residents triple that amount to the Nantucket economy. Article I opens the gates to a frenzy of home buying by off-islanders, creating mini-hotels with rapid turnovers and disruption of the tranquility. And I know of more than five people that have objected to noise on their property but were ignored by the Board of Health or the police. It has drastically changed the character of the island, which is precisely what makes it desirable, and as such is unsustainable on the long run. Think of overfishing, right? The cod. We have a lot fewer cod now. It's unsustainable. It claims it is the only way to promote tourism when no one is against tourism. It is our major industry. Article I claims that it limits the rights of local homeowners to rent when it does exactly the opposite. With fewer speculators renting, local homeowners have more of a chance to earn income by renting. Say no to Article I.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Vicky Goss. I live on Blueberry Lane and what used to be called the Badlands, we still do, on what used to be called Sewer Bed Road. Long ago, three, what, six votes ago, on this STR stuff, we were told that nobody wants to rent mid-island. So mid-island is basically going to be safe. Don't worry about it. Well, now Korea Lane, which again is in the Badlands, has two properties for sale, brand-new-built estates, not even pretending to be, you know, family home-type things. They've got pools, they've got the whole nine yards. One's for $11 million, one's for $9 million, and there is another plan for another one. There are two at the end of Field Avenue, brand-new swimming pools, the whole, you know, everything a renter would want. That one, those two, have been empty most of the last couple of summers, every time I walk my dog down there. These places are being purpose-built for rentals in what used to be family neighborhoods. There's a five-bedroom in Hussey Farm, a family neighborhood. It's not for us anymore. 99% of us could not afford to buy any of these, to rent or not to rent. So we're not buying these places, and if we stop enabling the rentals all over the island, then maybe some of the prices will go down, and we can actually afford to buy and build. We've only got so much dirt, as Nat Low likes to say. We'd like to be able to buy some of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Backus?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Holly Backus, Preservation Planner, but I'm here before you as a private citizen because my grandfather's not alive to do so. Short-term rentals are not a new phenomenon on our historic island. Short-term rentals have been a big part of our history since the end of the whaling era. For those that turn a blind eye to that history and don't understand the positive benefits it's had on the working community for several 30 miles out to sea, per our National Historic Landmark nomination update, and I encourage you all to read it if you haven't, the first advertisement for renting a cottage in the Inky appeared in June of 1865, at the end of the Civil War. That's a long time ago, 160 years of short-term renting, not to mention that in 1845, there were several hostels for summer visitors to come and stay, but I could go on. It's easier for those that don't live here year-round to think that we are helping our historic island against short-term renting, but like everything, it does need moderation, which will not happen by voting Article II. That would be a death to our island economy. That would be an economic, basically, taking to the fullest. I'm voting yes on Article I. My late grandfather, Dick Corcoran, spent many of his years working to protect our family's property rights. Over 50 years ago, he built simple cottages as summer rentals for visitors to come stay year after year. If he was still with us today, he would have written many eloquent letters to the editor to support property rights, as he did when the bill was proposed for the Kennedy bill back in the '70s. Those of you that don't know, Senator Kennedy wanted to take control. We didn't want it. We wanted local control. That's what we need to do now, local control. Now that there have been recent court cases that short-term rentals are not expressly permitted use, my grandfather would want me to stand here to support of Article I. It's imperative that we vote Article I to protect our rights for us and the next generation of Nantucketers. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Bob DeCosta. For anybody that doesn't know me, where do I start? This is, this has been driving me crazy for a while. I'm listening to all these statistics from different people about who owns short-term rentals, how much money gets generated for the island, blah, 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 blah. One thing I learned is this when I was on the Select Board, statistics and surveys are, they're not worth the paper they're written on. You can get anything you want written out of them, just depending on who pays for them. The reality is, short-term rentals are an important part of this economy on the island. We have two forms of ways to make a living here. You're either in the building trades or you're in the tourism trades. There's no more fishing here. Anyone that makes a living as a fisherman is a dinosaur. I'm one of them. There were eight of us scalping today, eight. Eight fishermen went scalping today. Yesterday, there were 25 boats out. There's no other way. We're running out of dirt. You're absolutely correct. So tourism's in. This will be a dagger in the tourism industry. Right now, we have no regulations in short-term rentals, and it seems to be they are there. If we cut them in half, then we should cut everything in half. We're basically turning Nantucket into a big HOA, and the gates are over on the Cape. So if I have to take a hit, because 50% of my business comes from short-term rental occupancies, then all the construction vehicles, Tuscana, the landscapers, everyone who owns a home, everyone has to take 50% of their vehicles off the road during peak season. If that's the problem, if it's all about infrastructure, then everybody should take a hit. Why are we being singled out? Everyone who has a business in tourism makes money off of short-term rentals. It's a trickle-down effect. If the money goes off-island from the rental, I don't care, because the person that stays in that house books a charter with me. And it's been said that as long as I can catch a fish, I'll be busy. Well, if there's nobody there to book the charter, I don't care the damn how many fish I can catch. It doesn't do me any good. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Can you get a microphone to Mr., is that Cassidy?
Thank you. Madam Moderator, please call or move the question.
Oh, okay. So we talked about this, didn't we? A motion to move the question is not debatable. We go right to a vote. If you vote yes on the motion to move the question, we will then go right to a vote on Article I. If you vote no on the motion to move the question, then we'll go back to discussing Article I. Does anyone have any questions about the motion to move the question? Questions in the gym? Okay. So, voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. Yes would adopt the motion to move the question, end debate, and we'll go right to a vote on Article I. A no vote will defeat the motion to move the question, and we'll continue discussing Article I. So one for yes, two for no. Voting is open. Okay, voting is now closed. This will require a little math on my part. Okay. Sorry, I just want to make sure that I have this right. I was a Romance Language major. This is ridiculous. Okay. Oh, do. Oh, he can show me the percentage. How about that? So, so yes, 1,198. No, 210. That's 85% to 15%. So that motion is adopted. We'll go right to a vote on Article I. Okay, so Article I. Article I, is there a point of order? What's your point of order? Two-thirds. Yeah, I was just going to say. So Article I is a zoning bylaw amendment. It requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. The motion that you're voting on is Mr. Borgeson's motion to move the substance of Article I as printed in the warrant. So if you vote yes, you're voting to adopt Mr. Borgeson's main motion, the substance of Article I in the warrant. If you vote no, you're voting to defeat Mr. Borgeson's motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. Okay. Okay, before you vote, I just want to tell you, it's a point-of-order question. On your device, there's a little sticker. Mine is yellow. If you're in this room... device, there's a little sticker. Mine is yellow. If you're in this room and you want your vote to count, your sticker needs to be yellow, orange, or gray. See? You all know that. Yellow, orange, gray. Is it down here? Sometimes it was down here. If you're in the gym and you want your vote to count, it should be blue or green. Okay, so, yeah, I'm giving you a chance. So if you have, if you're in here and you have a blue or a green button on your voting device, you need to go to the gym, the high school gym, not the CPS gym, the high school gym. And if you're in the high school gym and you have yellow, orange, or gray, you need to get in here. So that's number one. Now, we have another point of order coming from the gym.
Seems like the general sense is that we'd like to solve this tonight and not defeat both articles. Well, my question is, if...
Wait, wait, wait. Who is even talking?
Oh, I'm in the gym. Isaiah Williams. I'm sorry. I didn't say my name. I'm sorry.
Where? Who?
Isaiah Williams. I'm in the gym.
Oh, you're in the gym. Okay.
I'm sorry about that. I would have been in the auditorium if there had been room.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
My point-of-order question is, if we defeat, if Article I does not pass and Article II also doesn't pass, can we reconsider the votes on either of them afterward? Since it seems like we'd like to solve this tonight and not leave with nothing.
There is a possibility that you, someone who was in the winning majority, so let's say you vote against Article I, Article I doesn't pass, and you decide you want to revisit that, you could make a motion to reconsider, but that motion requires a two-thirds majority to do that. So there is a possibility. Same thing with Article II. Any motion to reconsider takes a two-thirds vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rafi, is this a point of order? Hold on. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no question. Once we start Article II, is Article I over, though? So we have to...
But it's all the same night, so we can, we can make it work if we have to.
If we want to, we're allowed to. Okay, I'm just making sure. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Long-term rental have a term.
There's no term on long-term rental, and that's not a point of order. We can't talk about, can't talk about that. So... The green light's on because, the green light's on. I don't know. It doesn't really matter because ultimately, I'm gonna start all over again on this voting situation. So, here we go. So here's what we're doing. Is everyone where they're supposed to be? Yellow, orange, gray in here, blue and green in the high school gym? Okay. So now we're gonna vote on the subject matter of Article I. Now, what we're voting on, we're not voting on, let's just be super clear, we are not voting on the Planning Board's motion to take no action. No, we are not. We are voting on Mr. Borgeson's main motion, which is to amend the zoning code of the town by doing all of the things set forth in Article I as printed in the warrant. So a yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will defeat that motion. This is the vote on Article I. It's not anything other than the vote on Mr. Borgeson's motion on Article I. If anyone has a question, I want to hear it. Otherwise, it's one for yes that will adopt Mr. Borgeson's motion, two for no that will defeat Mr. Borgeson's motion. Voting is open, and I will tell you when voting is closed. Make sure on your device that the vote that you intend to cast is what's shown in the window. Voting is now closed. Okay. On the main motion, yes, 1,045. No, 421. That motion is adopted by a two-thirds majority. That's 71% to 29%. Okay. I'm ignoring that clapping? Okay. I will now recognize Mr. Iverson, Chair of the Finance Committee for making, I mean, Planning Board, sorry, I elevated you. Back to the Planning Board with you, Dave. Sorry. Mr. Iverson, Chair of the Planning Board for the purpose of making a motion to take no action on Article II?
Yes, I would like to change the motion to take no action, please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. This is a debatable motion, the motion to take no action, and I'll recognize Ms. Rayport.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I'm a member of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously to change our motion to a motion to take no action, and I abstained from that vote because I feel that that is a question that should be taken up by town meeting. And I wanted to have the opportunity to make sure that everyone voting understands that they could take up elements in Article II if they wanted to. I understand that that might not be desirable, but it is something that we can vote on. There are aspects of Article II that are particularly beneficial to shifting rental housing to long-term rentals away from short-term rentals. I think it's really important that people understand that there's only two ways to create attainable rentals and attainable housing in the market that we live in. We either pay for it as taxpayers and we paid $150 million for it, or we provide incentives to motivate people who have taken up our very generous zoning code to have garage apartments and secondary dwellings and provide incentives for them through policy to encourage them to rent year-round. So there are aspects of Article II that will really help provide more year-round rental housing, and I don't think they will negatively affect the economy. So if you want to debate this and you want to hear more about it and aspects of Article II, I would encourage you to vote no on the motion to take no action, and vote yes, sorry, you want to vote no, and then we'll be able to talk about them. Right, Madam Moderator?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. If the motion to take no action fails, then we'll have to take some other sort of motion on Article II. Mr. Borgeson?
Can we call to table Article II? The people have spoken. We want to eliminate Article II right now. We have 70% voted for Article I. We do not want to discuss Article II tonight. Let's, can we vote on that? The Planning Board unanimously decided...
Well, here's the...
To table the article. So that's their recommendation, correct? So we don't vote on a Planning Board?
It's a debatable motion, so...
Okay, I would like to, I would like to call the question to table Article II.
The sad, unfortunate news for that is that when you move the question, you have to just move the question. You can't like, you can't say everything you want to say and then move the question.
Okay. Madam Moderator, can we move to question?
No.
Why not?
But nice try. I would love to say yes, but no, we can't. I'm gonna go to this gentleman here.
Brooke Gibbs. So the question is, is what happens if this gets to the state and the feds decide that it doesn't fly because it's unconstitutional, or it's a power grab, or it's discriminatory in regards to people's economics and their personal income and their personal capacity to rent? If this goes to the state and you don't vote on it too as well, then it comes right back to us and we're in the same situation right away. So I would advise you guys to really think about what you're pushing for before you get it and then it turns around and bites you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowdette?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowdette has called the question. As you know from past experience, we go right to a vote on the motion to move the question. That will end debate, and then we'll go to a vote on Article II. A yes vote will adopt the motion to move the question and end debate. A no vote will defeat the motion to move the question, and we'll go back to discussing the motion to take no action. Any questions? Okay, voting is open. One for yes to adopt the motion, two for no. This does require a two-thirds vote. Voting is now closed. On Mr. Bowdette's motion to move the question, yes, 1,181. No, 257. That's adopted, but it's 82% to 18%. So now we'll go right to a vote on the motion to take no action. The motion to take no action on Article II requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It's one for yes, two for no. Voting is now open. It's a majority vote on the motion to take no action on Article II. Okay, on the motion to take no action on Article II, yes, 925. No, 485. That motion is adopted. So I will now recognize Matt Fee, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, of the, I don't know what my issue is, I'm sorry about that, of the Select Board for the purpose of making a final motion, the motion to dissolve.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. I think we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. That motion is adopted. Thank you very much.